Good evening, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Wednesday, June 22, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. For the folks at home. We'll get to, we'll show them the agenda for tonight. Okay, they're very good. First on the agenda is a resolution regarding the development tradition. They are up to their section seven of eight sections on the build out. And so they're filing the plat and the necessary documents. And so we have a resolution approving that. And then a slight amendment to the resolution number 58 of last year regarding public access easement, specific language to the easements on the public spaces there. And an update to the COVID cares act grant application. I've been in touch with the folks who are in charge of that program as to the potential for other applications that may drop out. And as you know, Red Hook Response has approached us about possibly sponsoring an application. And so adding that back on for tonight's consideration that we do, in fact, make an application and they will let us know if there is some funding that can be reallocated for that. And then, as mentioned in our previous meeting, we'll have a brief discussion on grants. And then most likely at our next meeting, approve grant applications for the state CFA. And then a brief discussion about the housing needs survey, which was presented at our last meeting, and whether or not we want to establish a housing committee. And then we'll do our committee and board reports. And that's essentially it for tonight. Okay. So first off, I don't actually have any announcements. Does anybody have any announcements they want to make? Right? Just to say congratulations to Tivoli, 150 years in. And the celebration this last weekend was indicative of Tivoli throughout the years. It was creative, wonderful, small, very community oriented, scrappy. Really a job well done. And congratulations to all of you that worked on it and have worked on making Tivoli such a great place throughout the years. So congrats to. Or any other announcements before we get started? Okay. There we go. First off is, as I mentioned, tradition, the development down on Route nine or just off Route nine is now ready for section seven and has provided all the necessary documents. And so this would be resolution number 39 of 2022. And it talks about how the planning board adopted the site plan approval back in 2016. And it's authored to dedicate a certain parcel or parcels of land. So for the folks at home, just so you know, there is going to be an athletic field that's going to be used by organized groups scheduled by our town's recreation department. And in addition to that, there is a trail that will be open to the public. And there's.
I would just note that only scheduled by the town, if the town ultimately decides to accept the easements that are being described here, for now, it would be the HOA that would be in charge of that.
Exactly. Okay. Site plan approval commencement of construction of section seven. There are certain bonds that are required to make sure that they perform the work associated with the development. In addition to that, there is some zoning incentive zoning fees for the 12 units. Is that right, Chris? For for section seven? And payment of those as part and parcel of the development plan that was approved.
Right, that's prorated 12 units, right?
Okay, 12 units, very good. Okay, and that is resolution number 39. And we have as part of those documents, we have a letter from the engineer talking about the submissions and that we are in a position now where we can go ahead and approve section seven. And there were some calculations that went into the performance bond. Any questions, board members on resolution 39? 39? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Thank you very much, Bill Hamel. Second?
A second.
Thank you, Julia. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of Jacob Testa?
Aye.
And myself, thank you very much. And also a relative to that discussion is the resolution amending the public access easement. We'll get to that. That'd be resolution number 40. There's a north-south trail in section four and section six of the development. There's a passive open space. There's also a multipurpose field and a bit of the trail in section seven as well.
And these are the final forms of easements that have been prepared consistent with the approval last fall. You may remember, we approved the irreverible offer form. At the time, we had a description of the easements rather than the documents themselves. And they've now prepared and provided the documents with the legal descriptions of the various areas in specific language.
Okay. Any questions, board members? Resolution number 40. Amending resolution number 58 of 2021. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, as I mentioned, I've been in contact with DCR about COVID cares act grant opportunities. They had initially told us all the funding was set aside for other projects with the exception of farm labor. We now have Hudson River Housing doing that application. There'll be the sub recipient for that program. But we are back at the table because they had encouraged me to stay in touch with them and they will entertain at least the application. They'll have a better sense of whether or not there's a funding for Red Hook Response. This resolution would authorize that application. What we're calling obviously a food insecurity program and up to an amount of $100,000, I think. The folks at Red Hook Response are in the neighborhood of $95,000 is what their current estimate is. It would be for meal prep and also for a cooler trailer associated with their mobile kitchen. And this would be resolution number 41. Any questions, though? Okay. I'd be happy to move resolution 41 to authorize an application for food insecurity program under the CDBG grant COVID cares act. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, and many thanks to all the folks at Red Hook Response for all the great work that they're doing. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Erica? So that is resolution 41. Okay, so we are now on to that chart that we had again from the previous meeting discussing grants. There seem to be some interest in several categories. Have you had a chance to consider what you'd like to do? I would first bring up, I guess, as we've been discussing for quite some time now as part of our initiative to provide the appropriate infrastructure to realize the vision of the traditional neighborhood district. We've been applying for grant dollars to extend the sewer system. Now that it's going in in the village and it's not quite to the town line. It's about 22 properties shy of that, but well on its way. And so we think because the program we were applying to needed to have a lot of documented failures of septic and water quality issues, that it's been a challenge for us to receive the funding, even though it's not a lot. But taking a different tact and looking at the possibility of actually doing a shared service as a local government efficiency, here we go on the screen, to do a joint project with the village of Red Hook to, to, you know, apply for these grant funds to do a feasibility study to extend it all the way down to Hannahford on Route nine. So folks, are we, are we good with that as an application that we would like developed? The deadline of which is at the end of July. This is a CFA opportunity. You'll see the planning grants. The range is 12 and a half thousand to 100,000. And we anticipate this could be somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to $60,000. We'll see what the village portion might, might add up to. Are we good with that, board members? Is that something we want to move forward with? Don't all chime in at once?
Yes.
Thanks, Bill. Julia, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. All right. And then next up, just above that, the smart, smart growth, comprehensive planning grant program. We'll need to figure out who would do the application. But we have discussed doing a grant app to review our comprehensive plan and update it. It has been reviewed from time to time. The last major review was at the time of Centers in Green Space back in the 2009 to 2011 era. And it's been 10 years or so. So it's time to take a fresh look at it. Are we, are we good to, to go ahead with a smart growth comprehensive planning grant program? Maximum, maximum request is 100,000. There's no minimum. And there is a match, a very small match that goes along with that. Real good, all good with that?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. I guess my only question is whether it would make sense to approach the villages and see if they would be interested in cooperating with us on that effort at all.
Well, I'm glad you asked that. I have already posed that question to the mayor. And so we should hopefully hear back about that between now and, and our next meeting. We, we have a good three weeks, just about between now and the next meeting. So hopefully they'll have an opportunity to consider that as a for whether or not they'd like to do a joint application or not.
Thank you.
Jacob, any, any thoughts, Bill?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Very good. And then the other opportunity would be, and we would certainly want to engineers to do this application would be for a W equip. I'm looking for that on the chart here, apologies. So an application. Here we go. DEC a W equip program. And this would be for water quality protection. In this case, it would be for a new salt shed, as the folks may or may not know at home. We have a very large salt shed here. We've had it for many, many years. It sits on top of the aquifer. So we're very mindful of making sure that whatever storage we have for those needs is something that won't have a negative impact on the water quality. But it has, it takes its toll, the salt on the structure itself, and it's nearing the end of its life. And we're going to have to do something about it the next, next couple of years. So that's, you know, we may be looking at as upwards of a million dollars for something like that. And we'll need, we'll need some work from our engineer. Certainly as it relates to any changes to the locational orientation of the salt shed. As the folks at home may or may not know, a few years ago, the town board at the time acquired an adjoining acre of land that sits just south of the salt shed. And so as we look at our municipal campus here and try to plan for the future, we'll, we'll have to do a little bit of planning work before we go ahead and cite a new location for the salt shed. Okay. Town board members, any thoughts?
Just a quick question.
Yes, Bill.
Can that grant, if it were to be awarded, a portion of that also be used for the planning of the campus since it does involve water quality?
I would, I would think so. I mean, we just have to sometimes with grants, as you know, they are not retroactive. So I would imagine so that it would have to take into account design and layout and so on and so forth. But I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I mean, I know that it would if we have not expended any months. The question is if we have. That answer you? Did that answer your question? Okay. So we're good with that application as well?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. So let's keep that in mind. If there's any other grant opportunities, there still may be time. If we tackle it at our first meeting in July, and then everything needs to be approved for our second meeting in July. So we've got the 12th and 27th with CFA's, they're due on the 29th. Okay, very good. Moving right along. We have a brief discussion on housing committee. So we had the my very long-winded presentation on the housing, county housing needs assessment report. And I guess the question is next steps. And Julia, did you want to speak for a moment about what you think next steps might be?
All right, I'd be glad to. I, I really appreciated the in-depth presentation at the last meeting. I thought you did a really nice job going through what was admittedly a pretty hefty report and pulling out the main points. And so one of the things that stood out to me was really the, the toolkit of solutions that were proposed. And, you know, I think it will be a process of sifting through those, figuring out which ones fit in a community like Red Hook, how they can be combined, you know, understanding the data in the report and maybe being able to drill down a little bit more with some additional local data. And to me, that's really an ideal sort of task for a committee to take on. So I think, you know, the way you had it titled on the agenda, housing committee. I think establishing a committee in the same way that we have a committee for open space or a committee for energy to really make sure that this issue is on our minds and on our agenda in an ongoing way would be a great thing to do.
Great. Yeah, to have focus on it so that we can start to implement some programs over the course of the next year or so. So that we can see our objectives come to fruition. Jacob, any, any thoughts?
No, I totally agree. And I, I think that this is something that would be good to establish, not just for the current moment, but looking towards the future and having something that, you know, we're always kind of keeping an eye on. We have people that are, you know, that are going to develop, you know, skills, working together and thinking about these for our community specifically. So I think having a specific, a specific committee for this would be a really valuable thing for our community and a really good idea.
Yeah. And I think the notion of calling it a housing committee as opposed to affordable housing is one of the most interesting things I thought that came out of the needs assessment was not necessarily that there was a shortage of housing, although I think we would maybe dispute that a little bit, but that there was quite a mismatch between what the community needs were, where the demand was and what the housing was that we were finding in the study that people in the lower 25% were reaching up to get the, the housing in the next segment. And then people at the, the top end of the spectrum were reaching down because there wasn't enough housing stock that was affordable to them. And so that mismatch is all also something that if there's anything we can do to assist folks, you know, in order to either free up housing or create housing, you know, if people want to downsize, have we created opportunities for them to downsize, for example? So that, you know, a house that, you know, may be too big for them right now at this stage in their lives can be opened up for a family, let's say, that wants to settle in Red Hook. So very good, Bill. Any, any thoughts, additional thoughts on it?
Only thing I'd say is having participated in a working group on, on an issue. This particular issue is a heavy lift and it would be good to be, have a dedicated group of people with some expertise. A lot of work has been done up to now, but it's not as narrowly focused on our town as it should be. And I think having that dedicated group who can focus their attention on that one issue would be very good for our town.
Okay. Well, who would like to take a first crack at thinking about, you know, how to constitute and what a nice diverse representation would be on a housing committee? Julia, Jacob, is that something maybe two of you could share? Or is, does one of you want to take, take the, the bow and run with it?
I think we could probably work together.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work on it together.
Okay. Sounds good. That's good. Bill, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, terrific. Thank you very much. And then we'll be back in the next few meetings. We'll be talking about how many members, you know, mission, the whole, the whole nine yards, as we like to say. Okay. Thank you both for speaking on that. We are at the point where I think we're going to do our board and committee reports. Yeah.
Did, did you want to do the?
Want to do the thing? Yeah. So speaking of committees, zoning board of appeals, we have a vacancy and we've had an interested applicant, George John. Express interest. George has a very wonderful resume in addition to his private business experience was a former town supervisor, by the way, up in Columbia County. And we appreciate his offer to help us out and work on the zoning board of appeals. Are we all good with that? Appointment, this would be for the vacancy, the term of which actually ends in 2024. Okay.
Liaison to ZBA, I so move.
Why? Thank you, Bill Hamel.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jacob. Any further discussion, Julia?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thanks again. And now that, that makes a complete zoning board. Very happy to see that. And I know the chair will be happy to have. Let's, let's go to our documents again. We have first up. Police report. Bill?
All right. So if you go to the last page, I can give you a quick summary.
Okay, I'm gonna go slowly in case somebody wants to.
I do have two things to point out, though.
Okay.
When we're done going through them.
The main numbers for folks to, to say. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it was a busy month for the PV. They have 100 and So it was a busy month for the P D. They had a hundred and three matters that they responded to. They made two arrests. And issued thirteen summonses for traffic violations. The two things I wanted to point out to the public are one was. That there were nine medical emergencies they responded to. These are things that, you know, many of the things that are on the list. Larceny and harassment, things that we regularly think about in terms of. Police responding to, but they're often the first responders on a medical emergency, people having cardiac events and such. And they responded to nine. And as I mentioned, the last, the last time we did this, a lot of welfare checks. There were nine of those. And I think people need to know that, you know, if someone doesn't come to work for two days or someone's. Parents live here and they live out of town and they can't get in touch with them. The P D will. Make a visit to make sure the person is okay. And. I, I think these are sort of some of the important services that the P D provides that maybe get less noticed. So that's it for the police report.
Thank you very much, Bill. While, while you're on the microphone. Would you like to give us a Red Hook Tively monthly dog control report?
Well, fortunately, May was a light month. There was one loose dog and we do respond to some wildlife things, whether raccoons or, or, or whatnot that sometimes get into people's garages. But mercifully, it was a light month.
Okay. Deanna, is there any reminders that you would like for the folks at home?
To license your dogs. The law and it's not too hard. It's like fifteen dollars for a spay neutered dog and. Recommend doing that for since situations like loose dogs, at least we would know I could come here and find out if it's. Licensed so that before it goes to the S P C A or it goes somewhere else, I can, we can. Provide its license number and know that it's had its rabies and all of that. So.
To use the dog park, that is also a requirement.
Very good. Town of Red Hook Water District, Bill, it just looks like it's gonna be.
Front loaded me for the evening.
I think so. You can take the rest of the night off. Go ahead.
So. The, the water department is the, the only issue to report is that their well two. Had not, has not been running because the pump need to be replaced. And there were some issues in the contracting of that. Those have been resolved and my understanding of the water board had its first full meeting. In person since COVID last week. My understanding is that they, they should start work this week. I'll know tomorrow to replace that pump in the motor so they can get that running. It, it, it stopped running after they did. The rehab of both the wells, which is something that periodically has to be done and. Not cheap, but has to be taken care of. And I expect to have the, the water and well to pumping as usual. Within the next few days.
Okay. Very good. And I know that. Hank said that there was an inspection of the tank. And it's getting to the point where. You know, they feel they should take a look at whether or not the tank should be repainted. Whether or not they should explore a new tank.
Yeah, there was a discussion of that at the board and. You know, I, I think there's, it's a mixed bag on either front. The cost is high in both cases. Could cost a half a million dollars or more for the repainting and a new tank would certainly be more than a million dollars. So those are things to think about. We have some reserve funds, but those are for emergencies and I think we need to be thinking ahead. Towards dealing with the tank before it becomes an emergency.
Thank you very much. All right, if Christine were here, she would be giving the Recreation Commission report. I'm happy to do that in her stead. The top of the report is the summer program signups and it's going quite well. Seems like the numbers. Quite high. People are coming in with their applications right up until the last day, which by the way is this Friday. And John Kuhn. And also kudos to the town clerk and deputy town clerk for all the work. We're, we're working with our residents to check and get the forms in, in time. And people seem to be very appreciative of the program and, and the facilities and that's all. Thanks to you, town board, for your attention to the rec park and to the programs. And we're very happy that we can offer this. Free of charge to. Children in the Red Hook Central School District. We talked about the kiosk on the Rec Park West was relocated. It was in the way of the view actually. There's some work on the Rec Park West dugouts. There's been some tree work done. They did some reseeding. I gave them some old hay bales that could use for reseeding. Volleyball court lights have been replaced. The Summerman's Basketball League is starting up, youth basketball clinic as well. Red Hook Library Pickleball is doing instruction. We've got. Some electric at the new garage. We need to do some repair work or repainting work in the pavilion ceiling. Rec Park West mowing, he goes on to say skate park improvements, phase two is moving forward. There's more in skate park, the synthetic field. Still looking to see if we can get some, somebody on staff working later afternoon schedule. Youth football and Raider football camps. He's having a hard time finding a director for that. And over forty men's softball league. I understand you don't actually have to be forty. You have to be something like thirty-six or thirty-seven. Don't ask me why. Let's see, I think that's it for recreation. That's it. Okay, very good. Next up, Jacob, Highway Department report.
Yep. So Teresa included a couple of things here, including. Budget balances, the half year mark for gasoline and diesel. So the current balances for these for diesel are about eighty-three hundred, eighty-three seventy-one. Expected to have a fuel delivery this week, which will reduce the balance down to about thirty-three hundred. So. Getting pretty low for midway through the year. And I imagine that's a function of rising fuel costs over the course of this year. So. I wouldn't be surprised if we'll need to look to provide a little bit more funding for that as we get further into the year. Gasoline is also, sorry, I need to cough. Gasoline's also a little bit under half of the budget for the year at about six thousand dollars. So. That'll be something we'll, I'm sure Teresa will be keeping an eye on and we'll be looking at.
Okay.
She provides an update on staffing levels. And I think we've talked about that over the course of the year so far. I think the biggest thing is that. We're currently advertising for a full-time M E O to replace a retired crew member. The ad has run for at least a week. We've had one candidate meeting the requirements, including a C D L license. We had three total applicants. So the text of the ad is here. The pay is twenty dollars an hour. The ad will be on the town website in addition to the indeed ad that's already been posted. So if anybody is interested in this position, please apply. We'd encourage you to do so. Yeah. So we're really looking to hire another member of the highway department. We're also expecting to receive the new plow truck within the next two weeks. And Teresa will be asking the board to declare the old plow truck a surplus equipment. At that time. So that's something we'll need to discuss in the future as well.
Thanks very much. And yes, we, just for the folks, a reminder at home, we've spent the last. Six and a half years. One point four million dollars replacing the equipment in the highway department. It's. Pretty good condition given where it was just a few years ago. So, yeah, we do have. Some potentially surplus equipment as well. Okay. Jacob, it looks like a one-two. Is that right?
Yep. Yes. So this is a report from last night's Tree Preservation Commission meeting. A lot of good things happening there as always. So we had a guest, Alicia Rietma. Who was attending, she is interested in potentially becoming a member of the committee. So I think when she, you know. Makes a decision about whether she actually wants to, we might be considering her for appointment to that committing, replacing somebody who's looking to step down. In addition to that, a lot of good tree activity. New trees planted at the high school, Rec Park West are all doing really, really well. Which is really good news. There are a couple of trees that are not doing so well around town. One of the maples on Pitcher Lane appears to be dying. Had deer damage a couple of years ago, which probably didn't help. There's also a proposal for continuing to work at Mill Road School, including removing a few crabapple trees that are along Mill Road. Replacing with another species. It's yet to be determined. Removing four declining endangered sugar maples in the parking lot and then replacing those with the more appropriate species. And a couple of other things. So once that's approved by the high school, the work should begin in the late summer. I think we talked about potentially doing that in August. And then we discussed species selection and planting location for a placement tree in honor of Nancy Guskey. The original tree that was planted next to the town building died last year. So looking to replace that. There's a new pollinator program that's currently housed at the community center. So if people are interested in having a little pollinator garden, they have seeds over there and lots of information. So. I'd encourage everybody to stop over by the community center if you're interested in that. And as we talked about before, the Tree City sign located near Rock City has disappeared. Contacted the highway department, both for the town, for New York State. Nobody has any info about it yet. If we can't find it, we'll purchase a new one. I think all the stickers for the sixteen-year member. You know, recognition have been put on the other signs. And then there was an update or a report on the school program, including the poster contest and dozen nature walks at Mill Road School. So. Really, really nice work there for students at the school. So like I said before, a lot of really good things coming out of the Tree Preservation Commission.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Next up is the building and zoning report. Bill?
Sure. As one would expect, the summer, spring and summer are busy time. For people building and renovating their homes. There were forty-five permits issued in June. There were sixty inspections done, either progress or completions. And then there were sixteen certificates of occupancy or completions. Issued. The revenue that was generated in the month of June by the building department was fifteen thousand, one hundred sixty dollars.
At the end of the report, he gives a breakdown of what types of permits were.
Yeah, if you wanted to go down, there's a page, it's got a pie chart.
Yeah, that's all the way at the end. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's always a long report because it's all the.
Very long report and.
You're almost there. Yeah. So this, yeah, this lays out the, the types and, and the amount of. Funding, obviously building permits.
Commercial, yeah. And then.
Yeah. So there you can see building permits, residential is thirty-eight thousand dollars. This is year to date.
Yeah.
And commercial and then the various other fees. There is a new fee type, which I believe as applications for permits to run a short-term rentals are coming, are starting to come in. I believe that's what that, that seven hundred and fifty dollars is. But they would be, since they're responsible for that, they'll be reporting that in the future.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have for tonight. Does anybody else have anything before we close tonight's meeting? Okay, very good. Well, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. You know, that's coming up soon. And I hope you get a chance to have some. Fun and some relaxation. We are back with you on July twelfth. Tuesday for our next full town board meeting unless we need to call a special meeting. And with that being said, I entertain a motion to close tonight's meeting. Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julius Solomon, all in favor of Jacob Testa.
Aye.
And myself. Good night, everyone. Thank you all for your help.
Good night.